All right, good afternoon. Good afternoon, my name is Doug, Chairman of the School Board, and I'm going to call our special meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, July 31st, and it is 3:03 PM. We have a special meeting here, we've got some business to take care of, and then we're going to go into a workshop meeting, and then following that, we will have a public hearing to adopt the tentative rates for our 2018-2019 budget. That is scheduled to be at 5:30. So with that, I'm going to turn over the opening for our special meeting, the opening exercise, to Chairman Thomas Kennedy.
Thank you Chairman, Doug, will you just stand for the nap out for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, now, board members, before we adopt the agenda as recommended, I would like to make a note that under Item 6 Attorney Legal Matters, Mr. Bradshaw is going to have an SRO agreement update for us. So if you want to write that in for Attorney Legal Matters, that will be on the agenda. I will then entertain a motion.
Move approval, adoption, the agenda is recommended about superintendent and the SRO agreement update under Attorney Legal Matters.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent with his changes. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing that all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. Is there anyone who would like to approach? Any cards have been filled out? No cards, anyone like to approach citizen comments? So I've got a chance at the end of the meeting, if you'd like to speak, put your card in the back, you might be filling out. Okay, let me move to Item Number 3 Education Services, Doug Bieber.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm asking for approval of the BPK 2018-2019 Provider Agreement. Look at it in your packet.
Have the SROs fit into this or do they fit into this?
Have the SROs fit into the BPK Agreement?
Are they to be at the school, supposed to be the elementary schools, are they to be at the school, being protective of the kids or are they not?
Any students that are on the campus?
And I can tell you, all summer long during summer BPK, they're fast getting SRO access.
And their hours to be stable, the hours of the kids to be stable will be changed, the SROs will be changed.
Three hours on the same day, on the same hours as all our elementary students.
But Ms. Powers, you do bring up a point, though, that there's sometimes misconceptions that have been said from the legislature's mandate on down to say, public school students, which are arguably those that are voluntary, you know, in the voluntary BPK program, are public school students in private facilities. They are not necessarily being protected in the same way. They would not be part of this school district, it would be part of them to do, but that is a challenge that this legislature is going to have to define some of those parameters, because I would guess there's more than a dozen programs in Citrus County that people may be under the false assumption that that is, that they are public school students and they are being protected. So it is something, though, that, again, that the legislature has to be careful when they're overdefining and defining that protection as when it is.
And so when they are in the private facilities, here, I could explain it, when they're in the facility other than the regular elementary school, public school, are they, are the SROs, no, are we assuming they are or no?
I would say, no, we're not. They are actually under the Early Learning Coalition, and so they would be a private school provider. So they would not be covered at all under the SROs. So the daycare down the road, it has a BPK program. The parents, I believe, are under no illusion that they are public school students. Their only BPK students that are public school students are the ones that attend Hour 30 classrooms in our 11 elementary schools. Does that clarify something?
Yes, but I think there might be an assumption in that.
Private school, the assumption is if taxpayer dollars are paying for it, that they are a public school student, and that's where there's issue, because we've even heard locally that, well, if they're paying taxpayer dollars, then those schools are that, and that's not necessarily the case.
So we need to find some clarification on that. Let us like, you don't, let us like, observe what I've said.
Ms. Powers, can I ask a question? Are you talking about the private BPK fund? They're technically not our studentship, there's probably, you know, it's my son, and I put him in a baby, or I have never registered him yet in a public school, so he's technically not our student.
But the taxpayer dollars are paying for it, that's where some of that, taxpayer dollars are paying for BPK. Not necessarily in ours, I'm saying, but they are in a private, they're receiving money from the state. So, again, the assumption has been by some that if any state dollars flow, that that means that there's, you know, that there's some false perceptions right now.
And one of the things to clarify, the dollars don't flow through us, they actually flow through the Early Learning Coalition, and they come from the Early Coalition just for the students that are registered in our elementary schools. And so the schools that are private provider would get their funds from the Early Learning Coalition, have nothing to do with us, and like Ms. Hemel stated, they've never been registered from any of our schools at all.
Ms. Powers, is the statement said at school, so, 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 so?
The challenge, just so this board also knows, though, is there are these, some of these schools, and even religious organizations, that are moving now through the new scholarship money, corporate scholarship money, are using those monies to move into the first and second grade levels. I go to a church that's doing this. So those schools are now becoming tax-funded, private schools. And again, under different requirements than our local public schools are being required, they have to adhere to, not just with testing, but also with safety.
I have a voucher program.
That is the voucher, it's the corporate voucher program. On vouchers.
I have another question, and also, the pages number, we've talked about the number of students composed in the BPK, and it's a 12 to 20 children, they're there, then you can have another adult helping out. But I wondered, 12 to 20, do we actually have 20 people in the BPK group?
Well, basically, what happens is that during the school year, what we're talking about primarily is our pre-k classrooms. And our pre-k classrooms are made up of students in the BPK, so voluntary pre-k, and then also our students with disabilities who have an IEP. And so we limit the number of students from the BPK program, so that we're sure to have enough room for our students with disabilities. But I can tell you, by spring, there seems like there's always one or two classrooms in our district that are pushing over 18. And our school staff have worked to support that, and our executive team has worked to support that. Then anytime we get over 18, we add another person to those classrooms, so that they're really ones that mean three adults in the room. I can tell you, last year, having that one of our elementary schools, which brings our elementary school down actually to 20, and so there was a third person in that classroom.
We always add, it's.
Absolutely, absolutely. We want to keep those numbers, because what we're doing is, many of those students that are adept, and students that are being added, are students with disabilities, so they have higher needs, and so their ratio is to be higher.
Do you all have a motion?
No, yeah.
The only thing I was looking at, we talked about missing the school, if it gets missed up in like hurricanes and that sort of thing, is there any makeup or, or?
They follow the same makeup requirements that we have for all of our students in Citrus County. So we don't add on additional days just for these students, it would be what we would require for all students.
Yes, these students too, they would have some hours.
Absolutely, and we would ask them to make up those same hours.
Hey, I'm going to go with the K 2018-19 Provider Agreement.
All right, motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Cales, to approve the BPK 2018-2019 Provider Agreement, is there any discussion?
And I think we've all been in the classrooms, and I admire those teachers, and they really do a great job, and the kids are fantastic. I wish the high school kids was happy to come to school as those were.
We want us to have them all prepared for kindergarten and the office, set those foundations and those paper teams.
I've read in a couple of them, and they're really, they're sharp for the cookie, I'll tell you.
Okay, is there any discussion? Yes ma'am, Ms. Powers.
There actually is a summer school that we offer, and we have to have at least five students that attend this summer. We actually had eight students attend our BPK summer school. We have that at one elementary school, we choose a school that is as centrally located as possible, and we've had it supported with both a teacher and a paraprofessional, and they've been there. They cannot start before June, and they just ended last week, July 26th.
Their transportation?
Transportation is not provided.
Thank you, that's not a nice question.
No, no, you have as many as you want. Anyone else, any other discussion? All right, seeing that all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Item B.
And some asking for approval to advertise for public hearing at the September 11th, 2018, School Board Meeting to approve the addendum to 2018-2019 Code Student Contract.
Move approval to advertise for public hearing at the September 11th, 2018, School Board Meeting to approve the addendum to the 2018-2019 Code Student Contract.
All right, motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Cales, to approve the, to advertise for public hearing at the September 11th, 2018, School Board Meeting to approve the addendum to the 2018-2019 Code Student Contract. Is there any discussion or questions? Yes ma'am.
But on Page 4, in the heading right time, it says, a file of the disruptive students will be assigned to an alternative education program or be referred to mental health services. I'm wondering about the or. Statute. Okay, and how about how long, it says nothing about addresses or referred, but.
We have the idea.
So for us working with it, then how long would one be considering? Or is there like, how long?
I think Mr. Bradshaw would depend. We can't tell how long it's going to take to get their behavior corrected, it's not an exact science.
I think some of those, like when we refer to all, like the Renaissance or serving, I mean, it's not necessarily one, two weeks or whatever, it's when the people that serve me agree, and they're ready, and the principal at the school, their staff are ready, and they know that they can be effective back in the future.
So be reasonable now referring to them, and determination will be made by then.
Yes, kind of the same way as is happening right now, although now the statute requires us to have in there that they are notified that this is something that happens.
You know, it is interesting, because I noticed that too, but it was the law that like on Page 3 on B, you know, it says in the dark print, students will be referred to criminal prosecution and mental health service. And this one over here, it says, yeah, they'll be assigned alternative education program or.
That's right.
Sounds like it would be handed in both cases, but it is following the law.
Would you mind rewriting all this?
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Item 3 C.
Item C, approve amendments made to the Citrus County process for the 2018 Florida Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Scholarship Program.
Any questions?
I'm going to make a statement, again.
I'll probably do it.
This is, I will, I will vote to approve this, only because I'm happy that teachers are getting money. But this complete program is an atrocity, and it should be changed and changed immediately. There was an effort by the Senate to make that change last session, it failed. I hope that the Senate decides to take it up again. I believe every teacher is considered a best and brightest, and if they're not, then they don't need to be teaching. And I think that the teachers that we have all deserve to be having that same. And the same with the principals, although the principals, they have made it so obscure that I don't know that we even have a principal, do we? Is, we did, we didn't. I, again, I will approve it, because I want money to go to teachers, this is wrong, and the state needs to change it.
And I'll admit of that, as I proffered and society minister, Casey, because that was the first of the high school for years and years and years when this thing first started, and having the only white hair on the board up here, it's age discriminatory. It really is. I've watched some of the teachers that are older try and take these standardized tests, and they're brilliant teachers, their classroom management is superb, they're far above some of the best and brightest. They're experienced. And I think that this law is discriminatory, I really do. But I will, like Tom says, will vote for it, because it's the only thing we've got, and some teachers aren't getting it.
And of course, the dates have stayed the same, November 1st, on the deadline, correct? For November 1st, everyone's, teachers are aware of that, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right.
I remember a little note to myself, now I can't even explain my note to myself, but I noticed on the 6,000 eligibility requirement on Page 2, and the 6,000 on the first page, they seem contradictory about whether or not the person had to be in the classroom, or they could have been in the classroom, not going to administration. Both the five, they seem to contradict each other on Page 2, for a classroom teacher.
Well, it says the new, on the bottom of Page 2, new for 2018-19, they were a classroom teacher in the previous year, and then they got new to administrative role, they're still.
It can, right, but it seemed like the way it was written, it contradicted. One said they have to be right now, this moment, and the other said they could pull the classroom.
Well, it is new, they do a classroom, classroom, so.
Mr. Bradshaw, I'll take care of that.
Keep in the list. Anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve, and I feel the same way, it seems so ridiculous, saying that I move to approve the time for best and brightest teacher for the scholarship, but second.
All right, motion by Ms. Powers, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve amendments made in the Citrus County process for 2018 Florida Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Scholarship Program. Is there any other question in the comments?
Mr. Bieber, what type of? Dr. Bieber, thank you, thank you. Yeah, what, what tests, not every test, but what general types of tests are used also with the students' achievement, because a teacher still has to become highly, highly effective, and that would come from some students' scores, we've done away with them at this district, thank you board. But would there still be high stakes exams that students would attend?
There are still assessments, Mrs. Crowe is here, do you want more specific information?
We still have assessments that we have. And high stakes tests are still part of that?
Those are still part of that.
And I bring that up only because, you know, my other pet peeve is that we've put far too much stake in high stakes tests determining the value of our students and our teachers, and I just have issue with that.
Tom, as you said, your other pet peeve, we only had two.
That was just in the last five minutes. I'm sorry, Chairman.
Are there any other comments, questions? All right, seeing that all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes five to zero.
Okay, item D, this next item, and I'm going to ask Ms. Stanley to come up and address the board. This is the approval discussion of the K-12 virtual contract that we are looking at for Citrus County Schools. Ms. Stanley's going to.
Good afternoon, Ms. Hemel, Mr. Mullin, and School Board Members. What I've given you today is an overview of the K-12 references we contacted. Mr. Rollin and I called them, and we have provided you with their answers. Tried to be extremely unbiased, to just record what they told us, and give those, give that information to you today. We contacted a school in Indiana, Union School Corporation, Alabama, Ufala, I'm not exactly sure how to pronounce that, City, Ufala, City Schools, and Nebraska, which is Omaha Public Schools. We talked about their district information. Indiana, they have two brick and mortar schools, one elementary, one middle, one high, approximately 285 students prior to K-12. Alabama was also a small school district with primary, elementary, and middle high school students. They had implemented the K-12 virtual for three years, and then Nebraska is a little bit different. The Omaha Public Schools, it's run as a program. It's a program within the Omaha Public Schools, so it's not an individual school. It's a program within a school system. And in Nebraska, they have 90 schools, 60 elementary, and 30 secondary. We talked to them about their motivation for contracting with K-12. You can see Indiana wanted to increase revenue to avoid consolidating with another district or corporation. Alabama also wanted to increase student enrollment, and Nebraska, they just wanted to simplify their course offerings. We also discussed student population impact. Indiana increased from 285 in district with an additional 475 virtual students from July to September in the first year. And they're looking at year two, they will increase to 2,000 virtual students. Alabama, their first year virtual population was 15, year two was 1,000, and year three was 2,000. This allows them to bring in out of area students, they also are recruiting students for out of their area. Nebraska, like I said, it's a program within a school system, their first year was 129, and their second year was 108. We talked about the school grade impact. Indiana, the district academic grade moved from a C+ to an F, but they were encouraged for the 18-19 school year. They did not have their school grade yet for this school year. Alabama did not have a significant school grade impact, they remained the same. And in Nebraska, they received no grade, because it was a program within a school system, not an actual school. The financial impacts for Indiana, they were projecting almost about a million dollars in revenue. Alabama, the increase in revenue to 1.5 million was not clear on gross revenue in relation to total revenue increases. If you go to Page 2, the school in Omaha, they were breaking even. They were not making money, or it was not costing them. Their staff impact, Indiana, they, the K-12 staff did most of the work, but they will be hiring a special education director for year two. In Alabama, they said it had very little impact, but they will be hiring a registrar and a testing coordinator. And in Nebraska, they had a principal and a social worker, and they also recommended a data entry clerk. As far as ESC in Indiana and Alabama, so both said they had no issues, that K-12 handled their issues. In Nebraska, since it was a school within a school, they did have a rough first year. They said that they didn't have clear expectations, and they were not prepared individually as a school district for what was necessary to support an ESC student in a virtual environment. For testing, Indiana, they tested central locations. K-12 has picked up all the costs associated with the renting of the buildings at the central testing locations. K-12 took care of all of it. And Alabama, they had a central testing location as well, they took no problems. In Nebraska, they had a blended learning environment, so those students came to the district for three hours per week, so they tested during that timeframe, when they actually came to the district. So there were some stipulations in their contracts. Indiana will not take students after the ninth grade cohort. Alabama will not take students behind in their cohort. And Nebraska will take 10th graders this year, so Nebraska, which is the school within a school, will be at K-10 this year. And the overall general feedback from the three that we contacted, Indiana said they had easy implementation, better than expected, K-12 helped with enrollment and finances, and they said that K-12 had been very supportive in every way, and they were very pleased with the K-12 company. Alabama, very similar, easy implementation, helped with enrollment, finances, very supportive, they're very pleased. And Nebraska, since this is not a program, not a school, financially, they're breaking even, and as far as their concerns for their first year, they had some ESC concerns, it was a rough first year, but they look forward to a better next year, because they will be better prepared. So these are the questions that Mr. Rollin and I gathered when we spoke to the different organizations, and I'm here, and Mr. Rollin here, to answer any additional questions you have of us. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and we also have a gentleman here from K-12 as well.
How do we look at the issue with Nebraska having the program within the school and not separate?
In Omaha, they were, it was a program, they just, they just utilized K-12's curriculum. They paid for the courses per course, it was an actual program within, but wasn't an individual school, which is what they used as their curriculum to, it was a blended type of a curriculum that they utilized. They came to the district for three hours a week, and then utilized the online curriculum as well.
So how would you compare, let's say Nebraska fully as part of that, instead of just utilizing the curriculum? Looks the monetary differences, this costs millions, what is the difference?
Oh, yes, please.
She pointed out very quickly that there's a difference in those programs. The program that we've been discussing with you is really the same program that was implemented at Ufala City Schools and in Union County. The Omaha is a completely different structure, it's blended, and it's a completely different financial model. There is, it's more of a traditional vendor relationship, in which we give them a menu of curriculum and menu of services. They can choose, and they pay for those services all on their own, just like you would purchase any other service, but this is a little bit different structure, we put a model that we're presenting to you. So the other thing that's interesting, that's different about the Omaha model as well, is it's all their staff. We are not managing that program, that's why they had more buns. We simply had a consultant, we had one or two consultants that were up there on a regular basis. We provide initial training, that was their teachers, their administrators, and I think one of the biggest challenges that they struggled with is they took teachers who had been in a traditional classroom and moved them over to this blended, and there were a few of the teachers that really struggled with following a preset, prepared curriculum versus teaching what they had always taught in the classroom.
Monetarily, yeah, I don't understand.
Monetarily, the program that we're discussing with you is that we define program revenues, the money that comes in for these students the money that comes in for these students virtually, the state and the federal monies that come in, that are generated only by those new virtual students. The district receives an oversight fee that's negotiated. You keep that oversight fee for extra monies expenditures in your district. It's monies that you can use for a variety of different programs, original restrictionless facilities, new sports uniforms, new computers, new staff positions. You decide where those monies are spent. Then there is a program revenues go to operate the school. So all of them, basically 97, 95% of the money goes to operate virtual school. In the Omaha model, all of the money goes to Omaha. There is no oversight fee. We simply invoice them per cost. They've chosen curriculum, that's exit amount. They've chosen five different consulting service areas at three different levels, with each level being how much time you want us there. And so it's an all cart, customized, designed approach, and we just bill them based on the services they provided, and they pay us for those services. And as a result of that, it's been a break-even venture with the number of students that they've brought in, which is a very, very low number of students. They provide the facility, they provide the teachers, so they're paying their own teachers their regular salaries for their contracts, versus the model we're talking about. We proposed K-12 hiring the teachers, all those costs, all those risks, all of that falls on our back. In Omaha, they still take all those additional responsibilities.
Yeah, I spoke to Dr. Rolland Stein from Omaha, and she explained that process to me very clearly. But that then allows them also to only allow certain ESC students into the program. Isn't that correct?
Yes, one thing we talked about last time maybe with the charter, is a charter school. Now, none of these were charters. These were all district programs, but in the past, one of the discussions that we had was the charter, what impact it has on your scores, et cetera. Because charters have to accept other students. You cannot turn any student away if it's a charter school. If it's a district program, and even what you're looking at here is setting this up as a program in your district, those schools have been able to set some district policies on who can access the program. Ms. Stanley mentioned, those districts had set some policies about some of the criteria that students must have, and they focused primarily on high school. They decided not to take students that were behind their graduation cohort, because that is the single factor that has the biggest impact on virtual schools and their test boards. When you look at some of the reports of virtual schools across the country, they don't perform as well as their district peers. And the number one reason is that those district schools are taking this much, we sound as if the virtual schools are taking this many. 65% of the students who enroll at the high school level are behind, are credit deficient, they're behind in cohort. They're coming to this virtual school because their classroom isn't working for them, they're not passing, they're not going to graduate on top. And so, as you know, the state cohort part's got a tremendous weight, sometimes as much as 25% of the score for cohort school on graduation rate, who graduated with cohort work.
Obviously, we're not going to have a high school, or even K-8.
Right. But again, around that, with K-8, if you could set some different priorities, that would be, we could share with you some examples of what we've seen. I'm not sure of any particular policies that districts have set regarding that K-8 population or criteria, but again, as a program of district, you have the ability to set some criteria about who can and cannot access the program.
Same question, you think of ESC students? Who should be allowed in, who should not be allowed in? Who should make the comment on that?
What about who could be allowed in?
Yeah, the ESC students.
I mean, obviously, if they are unable to sit in front of a computer and concentrate on it, or unable to work with a computer, or, you know, some of those things, I think it's more sensitive. You'd have to be able to at least attend the virtual school program.
I mean, they would have to receive specially-designed instruction in the area of need, and so I don't know what the K-12 program can offer to be able to do that, if that would be perhaps only courses in which they didn't need specially-designed instruction. So for example, if a student struggles in reading, that they can handle the math, and perhaps that would be something. Many of our partnerships with our charter schools or programs honestly have very limited services they can offer to students with disabilities. So I'm not 100% certain what K-12 offers, but I can just say that as a generalization, schools in our area don't offer a plethora of resources and services for students.
But we can limit though.
And I'm not sure you can limit special education students in the program. I'll say that we choose.
That's why I just asked you.
I'm sorry, I didn't, ESC was a term I wasn't quite familiar with, that acronym, so I wasn't quite sure what you're referring to. The, on those students, we actually serve a higher percentage of students eligible for special education services than traditional public schools when we look at. A lot of the families are coming to us because they feel this is the least restrictive environment, and this is the best, the most appropriate setting for the child. And we run the gamut. I mean, we run a wide range of categories in special education, from autism to severe disabilities to, you know, you name it, visually impaired. And we comply with all of the state and federal requirements for services under IDPA. So we have a national special ed coordinator, a regional special ed coordinator, and we would have a program-level coordinator here at the district on our staff that would work with your staff to, one, make sure that all of the IEPs are conducted annually, appropriate with all the requirements. We work with your staff on that, maintaining the audits and reports, go through the full childifying process, and we provide all the services, including contracted services for speech, physical, occupational therapies. We have the modifications for visually impaired students, hearing impaired students, we provide all of those services. It's actually something that we excel at. We are very good at providing services for those students, and would not anticipate any problem.
You all talked about this in services.
I've not talked to them specifically, it's more a general conversation about what students would be allowed in. And so just that you know, we do offer services at a private school as an example for speech and language. We do help support our charter schools in that area as well, and we do have people on our staff, we do make sure that all of IEPs are written, they're compliant. Once somebody is in a private school, then that changes, they no longer have an IEP, they have a service plan instead. So I don't know what those services specifically would look like for a student of autism that's going to sit in front of a computer. I'm not quite certain what that would look like. I don't wish to be negative, I just don't know.
Yeah. Who's responsible for this, you mean, does it apply to you, or to you? I think they would set up like that, this child is not a student of autism.
I think that's legal.
Oh, not legal.
At the end of the day, they are our students, and we will be responsible. The contract would indicate that K-12 would provide all that. It would indemnify us, hold us harmless, if they did not comply with all of the federal requirements, the state requirements, and provide the ESC services that need to be perfect on the student. But at the end of the day, they are a Citrus County School District student, and so the name of the law suit is ours.
And they would come back to our schools, so it would be up to us to help further the effects that they might have, or, and that's as it is for any student that returns to us.
And if for some reason, a private entity that indemnified us, I'm not even saying this school in this case, but it's a private company that indemnifies us, goes bankrupt, declares bankruptcy, we're still the ones on the hook.
Yes. Yes, I mean, the legal progression of it would be that the due process of the lawsuit filed against the Citrus County School District, we would end up working with K-12 or filing a, you know, a claim, loss claim against K-12, you know, to provide the services, pay the monies, and everything else, but if for whatever reason, K-12 went bankrupt and did not have the funds, there will be an insurance requirement regarding the contracts, and there, obviously we would make them provide insurance, and we should cover all of that in that event, but yes, if they go to, against the insurance company also.
And if I recall, the entity we're contracted with is not the national, but it would be a Florida subsidiary.
The one that we were contracted with is K-12 Florida, which is a subsidiary of K-12. The K-12 Florida is the approved provider in the state of Florida, statute, so we would have to contract.
Contract.
And special education, all federal and state compliance is one of the areas in which we give you a guarantee that we will be compliant. If something goes wrong, we guarantee that we will make it right. And again, I know this is new to many of you, as you think of this, as I mentioned last time, this is not new to us. We've been doing this for almost 20 years now, in over 35 different states. And special education compliance and services to our students is, has not been an issue. I can only think of one time in which we really had an issue, and it really came down to an individual who was not doing their job. That individual was removed, and because, again, the guarantee that we had put in place for that partner, we brought in staff from several states, and we had a situation where we tried, this was many, many years ago, we actually reheld every single IEP conference, and redid the folders, and submitted with the state, and we went through an audit, and got 100% compliance. And so it was a mistake that was done in the front end, really because an individual wasn't doing their job, and so we rectified the situation. And that's what I'm guaranteeing you, the company will guarantee that we will make these situations right. And special education is the reason why we have a higher, slightly higher special ed populations, because this is a great environment for many of these students, and many of these families have chosen this because they do think it's best for their children.
I've got a question on the last meeting, the gentleman talking about the testing sites that they use Sullivan Learning Centers, probably is what I'm saying. So we don't, I don't think we have a Sullivan Learning Center here in Citrus County. So where, if a Citrus County student signed up for this program, where would they go to take the test?
We have used a variety of testing sites. We've used public libraries, community college, we've used other school districts cooperating with our partners, and sometimes we actually use their facilities. So if you have space that's available during the week of testing, that we can set up on your site, we would most likely use a site here in your county, in your district. But again, community colleges, we've actually rented hotel conference rooms. We, that is one of the biggest challenges, the logistics around preparing for state testing week. And so that's really one of the things that our team starts working on at the very beginning of the year, is where are we going to test all these sites, where are we going to have the certified teachers for several sites, the ratios, meeting all the state requirements for secure and safe testing.
Well, one of the comments I heard from, I spoke to three different people, I didn't call the attorneys, but I spoke to everyone that was on the list of library, was that pretty much the general consensus was that you follow up, you do what you say here. So that was, I appreciate those comments. The audit, if there were to be an audit, how would that take place? And nobody, I mean, I asked a couple of these individuals, and they hadn't had an audit, and they're still communicating, so how does that take place?
I have not directly been involved with any type of an audit. I know that there's a variety of different types of audits that take place, financial audits, special education audits, and sometimes charter compliance audits. Our team works with whatever entity it is that's set up in that audit, whether it be a legislative, financial audit, or whatever, we work with them. We develop the reports that they request, provide all the data that they request, give them access to the facilities, and to access to the student information, and just, again, comply with all of the requests for datas, the data, and whatever else that they need. And then we would provide that to them. And so it's much like what we would need to provide for your staff and your board, as the program operates. If there's a particular area that you want information on, you just tell us what report you want customized, whether it be on the financial side, or academic side, instructional side, staff operational, we'll customize that report and provide it for you. And some of those we provide on a regular, on a regular basis.
And the school grade part of this, would this be a school, as in one school grade that would reflect, or would it be like an elementary and maybe one school? Hey, we're doing K through eight.
It would be, no, it would be one school, it would be a combination school grade. They have combination schools, if you have schools that have K to eight, if schools that are middle and high, or just high, but they would be, they would get their own grade, and they would be considered a combination school.
And we work with districts on both scenarios. Some set it up simply as a program, and they just blend those scores into the rest of their student scores, somewhat like Florida Virtual does. If, we've had others that set it up as specific grade level configurations to model the other schools that they have. So they have a K-five campus, they set up a new, apply to the state for a school number, and set it up as its own LEA, and that way it gets its own report part within the district.
I'd like to follow up on the school grade too, because that was a focus of mine over the last couple of weeks of consideration of this, and this is maybe Mrs. Crowell's question. But part of the lowest core tiles is our district grade. And so how do you handle providing all that data to the state to obtain your school's district, your school's grading system? It will be only one school in ours. If they take all our high schools, all our middle schools, and all our elementary schools, and make that the formula to do their school grade. So how do you, how do you answer some of those pieces of information that the state's going to require to give you a school grade?
Again, I think if it's, if you apply to the state and set up a separate school, so you have a, maybe it's a K through five and a six through eight, you actually have two separate school numbers, or maybe you set it up just as a K through eight single school. Superintendent Hemel could probably answer that a little better than I could, on what maybe some prior discussions, or what the intent would be.
I'm discussing.
But if it's set up as a, let's just say for simple purposes, it's a K through eight, and you apply for a school number, it just, it's like if you decided to build a new campus and applied to the state and had a brand-new elementary school, then it has its own configuration within the state's reporting system. And as the data is put in, it automatically goes into the process.
Their data would be uploaded, just like ours is, from Skyward and surveys. So in survey two, survey three, and so forth, and that's where they'll pull students and know who is in the bottom core tile, who's, you know what I'm saying, to then come up with that grade. However, any student in this school will be part of our district grade, and will make up, will be part of our students that are in the bottom core tile, or not in the bottom core tile for our district. They would have their own MSIV number, their own school number, and have their own grade, and then those students would contribute towards our district one. But they would, their kids would be in our Skyward, and they'd be uploaded into, with the surveys, so that the state would know their student information to know them, to know bottom core tiles of them.
They would want Patrick's grade.
Yeah. And that's, I took a look at some of our schools, and we have six or seven schools that were only one or two points away from moving from a B school to an A school this year.
Or a tenth of a point.
And so I'm questioning the resources, and I know Suzy's done a lot of job descriptions this year, taking two employees and making them one, and so we had this quandary of how thin we can spread our resources. And we asked about, Mr. Kennedy asked you about what additional staff we might have to do, and we are very concerned about that impact. And I'm concerned that if we have that many schools that, just within one or two points of making that A, if our resources shouldn't go to what we already have, rather than spending services when we're trying to put everything that we've got into our schools that are here. And we're a B school, but I'll tell you, we've been an A-plus district, and our goal is to get our schools back to an A, and I just don't know how many of our stretch our resources are going to be.
I know we're going to respond with two things on the resources. One, I know one guarantee that we've already extended to you is that where we see the biggest impact on a district tends to be the data entry, and that registrar, and you heard that from some of the references that you spoke with, what it was. We've offered to allow you, you would hire a additional registrar for the school at our cost, at our expense, so there's not an additional financial resource, and that HR resource then began to, you get another person at no cost to you. And then the other thing in terms of resources is that this does provide additional financial revenue that'll allow you to address some of those challenges that you have, and wherever you deem the needs, such as I've heard the conversations around school resource officers, and the need for those, again, where does the money come from? This is one of the ways that there can be additional revenue to help cover those costs. This is one of the ways that there can be additional revenue to help cover those costs.
Yes, ma'am. But I think what I'm hearing too is potentially there could be a consideration of not just having one school, but having it divided as two schools, one being an elementary, K through says five, and then another being a six through eight, a middle school. So we could potentially have two grades that we're having to manage, depending on how it's advantageous for a situation. And it's not necessarily a decision that we have to make today or it's part of this, but that's, that's a consideration.
I just think the timing is too, I think if we started this in February, we might be a little more relaxed, but I'm just, I am not in any hurry to jump on this bandwagon right now. I agree with Mr. Kennedy, not for the same reason though.
It's okay.
I'm worried about school grades.
All right, I've got another question. In regards to the attendance, I know one of the things that has been mentioned is that the requirement to be online, and the students are actually there accounted for online with an attendance requirement, which I think that's the only way to go, because that means the student is there. I'm sure there's probably ways to be around it, but it's not like some other online programs where there would be no accountability with that. But my question is, one of the individuals that I spoke to, the gentleman from Union, he had mentioned that, well, if they're not doing the work, we just, he first said we expel them, and he said we withdraw them. So that made me question, how would we handle that on the attendance side? Can we withdraw someone if they're not?
Well, we see generally in most states, I know when I was the head of school in Arkansas, the state of Arkansas had a requirement that a student must be, if a student is not in attendance 10 days in a row, and by law that district was required to remove them from enrollment, so it was for all of those schools. And so when I was a high school building principal, we would literally have students that wouldn't show up 10 days in a row, we would have to withdraw the MSI dropout from the reporting system, mainly because the membership is tied with funding, and they didn't want districts receiving funding for school students that aren't coming to school. They show up on the 12th day and just say, well, I've been sick for two weeks and didn't notify the school, and they're ready to come back to class, and we just have to re-enroll them in the process. So the point is, virtual schools have been much like that. If a student, whatever the requirement is on the number of days that Florida has that if they're not in attendance, you're removed from the system, we would do the same thing. So at a very basic level of attendance, attendance is looked at by not logging in. So if 10 days went by and that student did not log in, we would remove them from the system. And usually we notify their student's resident district that they're no longer enrolled in the program, and so that district is aware that that student's kind of out there in limbo. But there are other ways that we look at attendance as well. It's progress within the system, it's attending the online sessions that are required, it's communicating with teachers. So there's a whole variety of issues that we are engaged in to make sure that students are actually doing the work and logging in, and much more than just logging into the system. But in that particular case, as you mentioned with, I believe it was the Union School District that removed the program, that again goes back to my comment earlier about districts can set certain policies that say a charter school doesn't have the authority to do. And I, we do have a small number of districts that have set their own policies, the one that was mentioned previously, that they don't accept any student high school that's behind and credit deficient. Union has put in one in place that says if a student is not engaged in the process, I'm not sure, we'd have to see what, how they define engaged in the process within a certain number of days, then they remove them from the program. And again, that was to ensure that the students are good fit, they're actively engaged, they're coming to class, they're doing the work, and if they're not, they, we don't want them out there in limbo, a district, one of those, to ensure those kids are getting a quality education. So if they're not, they remove them from the program. And they're legally allowed to do that because it's a school of choice. They have their local resident district that they have full access to, and so they're not denying, denying that child to a free or open educational.
I am a little unsure on all of that.
Yeah, I was just going to ask this earlier, Ms. Davis is in the back doing our virtual school program in Citrus County. Are we allowed to do that in a virtual school? They're out 10 days, and they haven't reported to Ms. Davis, and you just dismiss them?
And I was speaking to a specific statewide in case of attendance, and when we brought a student.
We've got a law that says they can't have a driver's license, but those kids got that date down pat, they only come to school for one day.
Ms. Couts, I think maybe Mr. Bradshaw can answer.
Florida has compulsory attendance until you're 16, and then you can, with the parent's permission, they're allowed to go to school. Until then, you're compelled by law to attend school. So if you don't attend school, then you move into a compulsory attendance law, into either sin spends situation or into a truancy court situation by statute, by administrative code, to compel the parents to bring their children to school. I don't, I don't think, and the reason that they are here is because Florida now has an open enrollment, and the open enrollment is controlled open enrollment, and we set our enrollment rate at 90%, so that except for there's certain things you can, if a veteran's family moves here, they, you know, they get to go to whatever school they want, you know, divorces and separations like that. But I don't think that, and I haven't got down into the weeds on that, that you could just say that because they didn't attend school for 10 days, you cannot, we cannot say you're withdrawn from the, from our school system. I think that, you know, issues that would have to be addressed, and my understanding, this is a discussion to see if we can move forward with the contract, with the preparation of the contract, and some of those we have to set it out. But, you know, what do we do in a truancy situation with a child that is, you know, I don't think we can just throw them out of the program. So you have to handle an attendance issue with someone who is now in another county. I don't know, because they're enrolled in school here, if I can have, you know, the truancy court in this county do it, or do I have to, you know, go to another county to do it? You know, if it's, if you want to set some parameters on, you know, of a number of students that can enter this, and that's a controlled open enrollment, you know, maybe we can do that, I'm sure, as to that, because my understanding is the reason that they approach this is because of the open enrollment policy law that has been passed, and that allows students from other districts to attend a school in another district. So my quick answer would be no, we cannot further empower them to attend, you have to give them a process, and even at the end of the day, you still can't throw a child out of the public school system.
And there's a big difference when you're talking about program versus school. They're doing this as another school, it's not a program. Health Academy's a program. We can set a lot of parameters for programs for kids to get in and out, but when you're talking about a school, then it's a lot, it's a lot less restricted for us.
And I would say the stipulation that we will not take students behind their cohort would not fall under Florida law of allowable because they're entitled to a free public education.
Correct. And you clarify, I said there was a difference. We'll set attendance policies in compliance with whatever the state's laws are on attendance and ability. The other part I was talking about has more to do with progress, ensuring that, and everyone's concerned about this, we want to make sure that the kids that choose this type of program are good fits for, that they're going to be successful. I used to tell my teachers, when you're working with your families, we want to make sure that the kids are getting a better education in your virtual classroom than they were in a traditional classroom. If you feel like your child is not getting a better education in this virtual setting, and they were when you were teaching in a face-to-face classroom, come to me, and we need to rectify that, we need to figure out what the process is, so we guarantee these children are getting a quality education, and that's the point. And so when I talk about districts that have set policies, much like the one that Mr. Dodd mentioned in this conversation with Mr. Haynes and Union, that they were removing kids from the program, that was that over age, set period of days, as defined in policy, that the student was not engaged, they're not turning in assignments, they're not coming to mandatory class assignments. We know that the red flags are there, that that child's not doing what it takes to get a quality education. Along the way, before they make that decision, there were a number of due process steps, a letter to the parent, mandatory conferences, attempts to contact and meet with the parent and student, and to try and rectify the situation, make sure they know how dire it is that they're not getting a quality education, what the concerns are. At some point in time, we'll make a decision that, under district policy, has been reviewed by the attorney to show that it's in compliance, that district set a policy if they're going to remove the child because it's not getting, they're not getting a quality education for not any of them.
Okay, any other questions?
We have college courses, and we got from Grand State in the high school, and we also got college credit. Does that happen with this program?
At this point, you're only talking about a kindergarten to eighth grade program.
Oh, no, I'm talking about early.
Early, we grow the program. Dual credit is usually handled, dual or concurrent credit, most of our schools do offer that. It's not a national or something that K-12 does, it has to be done. Dual concurrent credit is a very interesting situation, truly state by state. You must have the local partner, community college, your university, to be your partner to grant those credits, and whether it's concurrent, and your teachers are, who are teaching those college-level courses are employed by the district or the school, or whether they're employed by the universities, and we work through those types of issues. But the short answer is yes, we do offer dual credit courses in almost all of our schools through partnerships that we've developed with colleges.
And the teacher, the teacher going to be from you or being, like you said, from the college?
Usually they're from the college, and that's the difference, and you know, the distinction between current credit, which usually it's the district's teacher that's offering the course. The credit, this university that's actually awarding the credit, has deemed that that high school teacher employed by the district is qualified to teach that college-level course, or whether it's the dual credit, in which it's actually the teacher's employed by the university. So that's kind of the distinction. But we work with NACEP, the National Association of Concurrent Enrolling Partnerships, the national, quite willing to understand the best practices in that area.
All right. Other questions or discussion? Ms. Couts, did you have anything else that you wanted to say, or anything else that should be whereof?
Not whereof, but we've committed a bunch of calls and lots of discussions. And what they, what this program does is about resources for the district, make, we can say make money, but additional funds for the district, we have to turn off K-8s. We have to turn off school grade and those types of things. If you all choose to see me to inform with it, staff will certainly make it happen. They've got things in place. I know that we are, we're going to hire another staff member, so what we need tonight is if you all, you know, can afford it this, and if you all do, we'll certainly make it happen.
I was going to say, tonight's not a commitment, my understanding to do this is basically for trying to get a contract that both parties can do.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the word?
I agree with Mrs. Ryan, we're just overwhelmed right now, maybe it's the beginning of school and stuff like that, but staff, school grade, I appreciate the resources, but I'm a little overwhelmed right now in timings. You know, we'd love to have started this six months ago, and then not have the pressure of holding up our schools right now and say, go forward with the new contract.
Mr. Moll, are you fully staffed in your educational services department?
No, I'm not staffed upstairs, we're at the schools, we're still operating the teachers.
But even in the department upstairs, I don't believe you are?
No, we're still operating lots of services.
Thank you.
So is there a motion?
Do you want to motion? I just, I'm not prepared.
If there's not a motion, I guess it will die, it won't proceed, that's my understanding of it, not proceed for, if there's not a motion. There could be a motion to accept, approve, there could be a motion to deny, but if there's not a motion, the request is to approve moving forward with this program. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
All right, we're going to move on to item number four, school support services. Mr. Bishop is not here, he's in resources, Suzy Swains.
I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Approve it.
Okay.
All right, motion by Ms. Couts to approve the instructional and support recommendations on the Goldenrod. Is there any discussion? Okay, are those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes five zero.
The second item is to approve updated job descriptions for professional technical positions. We just changed the person, the position that, that these positions will report to, it'll be the Director of Educational Technology. Also, there is a job description that I have in my hand that was updated. The Systems Support Specialist, the camera and electronics tech, locks technician, did report, or was going to report to the Director of Technology, however, he is now reporting to Eric, Director of Maintenance.
I'm going to approve the updated job descriptions for professional technical positions as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Couts, second, by Mr. Kennedy to approve these job descriptions as presented. Are there any questions?
It's a strange sort of running through them, if you had required more experience, like five years, six years, seven years, and you look down at the bottom, it also said effective, positive interpersonal communication skills, and being able to work with others and so, and then when it was lower, if it was just one year, then you didn't have that in, maybe you should be in all the time, I don't know, maybe you should be able to work with people.
No, I agree, as we change job descriptions, we come up with that, I understand.
Very, very detailed, and you cannot not know what you're supposed to be doing, but you said.
Absolutely.
Yes, I've discussed some things on these job descriptions too, this one, so I think we are trying to make some changes to that. Now, the question I have, I just want to make sure, because I know you just handed this to us, I know the reasoning behind it, but for the sake of the board, on the camera electronic locks technician, which was reporting to the Director of Educational Technology, I want to move that to our Director of Maintenance. And I think it's a good reasoning behind it as far as the work that's being done out there, but board, are you clear on that? I mean, I don't think there's any problems that I have, but I didn't know, you know, a lot of what that person, that person we have in that position is a very valuable employee to this district.
Absolutely, especially with as many cameras that we have. Absolutely.
And we, as a board, remember, two years ago, when we lived with this program, we were saving quite a bit of money as, instead of having these contracts, and so it's been, it's been a good thing for us.
And it really falls under that division, even though technology plays a role in it. I know that the two departments talk integratively, I know that the technicians do as well, because there are integrated parts, but it really should probably fall under that.
And they are, we're dealing with electronic locks here, which are, is up that alley of our technology though too, but I know that we want to make sure that the cameras and locks, the electronic locks are the priority, and I know there is a lot of work to do there that now, so that he's not going to be pulled into other areas.
And this has come over progression, this change. We met with Dr. Gittes before he fully retired, we sat down, and what we found is that the individual was spending the majority of his time working with our maintenance staff because of the install, cable running, routing, things like that, but he still plays a role with TRC because the servers are housed over there. So it's a hybrid position, but we found that he's taking his direction from our side, hence the change. We met with Dr. Gittes, myself, Mr. Bishop, Jody, the technician, and came up with this being a better fit for the district at this time.
Right. And Mr. Stokes will burst on some of those, crime prevention.
Yes, and that's the other side of the element that we, he stays in very close with us. And as we're throwing the camera program, the access control, it's, we work very closely with risk management, so it's kind of a better fit all the way around for the district's benefit.
And Mr. Stokes, I mean HVAC nowadays. And Mr. Stokes, I mean HVAC nowadays, I mean, pretty much everything is integrated with technology. So while it may seem sometimes like, oh, well, that should be technologies, I mean, that's really your life now as much as.
HVAC, HVAC's one of the worst because of the EPA into it. I mean, everything now, all the basic units we put on the roof have a computer. Every one of them has a computer. Pros and cons to it, but bottom line, it's legislative actions that drive the changes in technology, just like education, just like construction.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other discussion questions?
For the thank you for putting this alternative in a golf, we have to work with other resources.
Absolutely.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you much, very much, on this one.
Okay, quick update on positions. We have 26 support positions. We have 45 instructional positions posted. Mr. Mullin, myself, Mr. Hebert, and Mr. Benomo called schools today that had several positions just to make sure they had things covered. Out of those 45, we have about 22 that are working on certifications. So that means they have to take a test, or they're waiting on the renewal of their certificate. It expired in another county, so we're waiting on that renewal process. We have about eight right now that are being processed through HR that we just received the recommendation. We've scheduled their fingerprint and drug testing, which is fast-tracked to make sure we get them. No, that's an additional eight. Yes, that's another. And then we have about 10 that are long, besides that 30, another 10 of those 45 are, they have long-term subs that they've secured at this time, that will stay in that position. They've worked in positions previously, so they'll stay in that position until a certified teacher is found and hired. And then we have about 45 that are currently interviewing, four or five that they're currently interviewing for those positions right now and are working on a solution. If you have any Spanish teachers, Christopher or Hi could use a Spanish teacher, anybody that had four ears.
Senor.
So that's, that's where our status is right now.
I worked at Ms. Josie's sub last year and tried to convince him to give up hospital ministry and get a teaching certificate on, whether you, I'll tell you about it or not.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have an extra question about the schools for teachers. I know that we were losing a lot of schools that didn't want to do the internship, send teachers for internships. What is it like now? Is it still that way or?
We've, we've actually gotten a few more. Mr. Benomo, I'll let you answer about how many.
Right now, we're about 20 interns that have applied and that we are already placing middle schools and elementary schools. We haven't had any at the high school level, but the majority are at elementary level. We're talking with the College of Central Florida, they are looking to change their program instead of K to three, they're looking to expand to K to six for the certification next year to give more of that open application process, because at elementary, we're always looking for that K to six instead of that K to three, because that limits teachers. So right now, we're about 20. Couple have dropped out of the program, but we're holding steady at 20 right now. And that's one day a week, and we have four that is doing a full internship.
I know this sounds crazy, but is there anything we can do as a board to incentivize? I don't know what that might be. I don't know whether that could be a scholarship that we offer. I mean, things, I'm thinking if they would make a commitment to us, and it's not a today decision, but I'm saying I think those are things we might want to look at, saying, how can we capture some of those people to say, choose Citrus County to do your internship?
I think we have a pretty good record. If they're a good intern, they get offered a job.
They're going to get offered a job.
By different principles.
We're getting interns from University of Central Florida, because we've got one off the desk from University of West Florida, St. Leo, College of Central Florida, and UCF.
Because I'm thinking if there's teachers that, let's say they, I mean, I don't know if you know UF's Pro Teach Program, which my wife was a part of, outstanding program, is going away. They shut it down because they don't have enough teachers to go into that. And St. Leo's, you know, we know the challenges that we're, they're facing there. So, I mean, I'm just thinking if there's a way that maybe there's people from, that were from here, that have gone to school at UCF or USF, and they would like to intern in Citrus County in some way, so that we could capture them to come back, man, that would just be great. And I, and I don't know what that might be, but that might be.
We did have a conversation with the elementary principal this morning, the three of us, and we could bring it up to her, because she's getting two one-day-a-week interns. If they went through the long-term sub process, even though they don't have that bachelor's degree yet, there would be a long-term sub there, working on their certification, they're working on that bachelor's. They would just have to work it out with the school, their school, their university, about that one-day internship.
And I think we, in the past, we've captured some long-term teachers that way.
We've done that.
It's a win-win for every.
It's one of the options that we're looking at.
I know you mentioned St. Leo, and I know we have some other private schools, but the one that I had brought to attention, like Florida Southern and Southeastern, I guess the Southeastern ball was dropped on their end. Is that right, Mr. Brad Shaw, or Miss Swain? Do you remember how that worked out?
That is correct. They did not want to work out a, they did not want to work out a contract with us.
It was too far for them to be able to manage their students. Is that what they, that's what they had said?
They would rather keep them in the county that this one is in. That is correct.
Right, okay. But this contract, these agreements we have with the universities, the public universities, they're pretty much standard, standard agreement on the.
Yes, that we place them with a highly effective teacher that's taught three or more years.
I've come to the point where.
That is correct.
All right. Well, I agree with Mr. Kenny. I mean, I, you know, I was trying to encourage us, looking at more of these private colleges, to get them, have students here to intern, in hopes that they'd see the quality of our schools and that they would decide to come here, even though they may not make as much as they would to larger county. But there was a lot of benefits for teaching in this district, so, you know, we could get them in, train them, be a part of that. Maybe it would be time to look at some kind of incentive for those interns that have done well, that we score well, or we evaluate well.
No ban.
We'd like to keep them.
No ban.
Just to offer is a good incentive. I'll tell you, I was hired, I was interned over in Orlando, and I was hired as an intern.
Well, then the biggest thing is those one-day, we have more than, we have tons of one-day wakers, so we have to try to keep them to get to the full term. I mean, we only have four that are on that full five days a week, so.
Wait, you said we only have four right now?
Four that are five days a week, the rest are just one day a week.
Several different phases.
Because one day a week.
Yeah.
And stay in the program as well.
Aside from teaching, too, it's important to point out, we're having trouble finding school psychologists, social workers, and guidance counselors, but they're just.
Bus driver.
I know bus drivers is always.
We're covered for the first day of school.
Thomas, with you driving, we're good together.
Yeah. Ooh, that would be scary. Don't tell my wife.
I wanted to bring up the mental health, because we used to have a nice partnership with University of Florida, where we had mental health interns, psychologists come down. And I mentioned today, I think Mrs. Himel, also Rollins College, private college, over in Winter Park, had, I don't know where the program is located, had a very, very strong mental health program. So if we could access those schools, because I know we're having trouble finding people, but if we could access those schools and make some sort of deal with them, some sort of contract with them about their people coming down and interning with us, they would serve us because we would have their abilities to count on, and we would help them because then they could count on what they're doing to graduate. So if we could look at that, maybe some of those particular two places, University of Florida and Rollins College, and HR also looking to them, and others too, you know, those two I know particularly I've worked with.
So do we know with other districts, do they offer incentives for interns? I mean, there is an investment, it's not, we're making an investment to help the intern, prepare them for a successful teaching career. So I know it was mentioned, we still have all these other positions that, you know, we're not offering incentives for maybe, but couldn't we see this as an opportunity to capture those people that we've already partially trained?
I know, I have not heard anything of interns. I have heard of incentives for teachers coming to the district, like such as hiring bonus. I have not heard of anything with interns, but we can definitely check that through our contacts in other districts to see. Absolutely.
In fact, I'm going to need a call super dentist next month.
Because one of the things.
Because I know they've got signing, just black mark fill areas.
Some have moving bonuses for people that move into the.
I know that that was brought up when Trish and I recruited in Pennsylvania, because they're just out of college, and they asked us, do we have any funds available to move, to help them move down here? And that was asked quite a few times.
And I'm not, you know, I'm wondering, maybe it's a, it's a menu that we, whether it's a, you know, each person, maybe that's what they need, one needs a moving bonus, maybe one needs to get their loans, some of their loans paid off with a agreement that they pay, you know, that they've worked for us for X number of years to get that, you know, each of those bonuses, but, because I would think scholarship, you know, payback or, you know, loan payback would be a, another type of incentive, especially if it's tied to years of employment, and it grows maybe with each year, you know, up to a maximum.
And we do have that in transportation with Maryland, is Maryland? I thought she was there. We do have that in transportation where we pay for their drug and fingerprinting, but they have to work as a bus driver or else they, they pay that amount back.
Don't we have that with substitute teachers? I thought there was something you were starting with.
With retired, we do that with retired personnel. We pay their fingerprint and drug testing if they come back.
Is there a way maybe we can get more of that out? I'm thinking particularly of the substitutes, because we just need substitutes, and especially veterans, you know.
We can definitely post that on the website.
Yeah, I mean, that may be a place to, you know, because, actually, we could get them for one day a week.
And how about us with interns? Do we give them any credit? If we hired the intern, his intern of the year was, do they get credit for that year and maybe in their starting salary?
They do not. They don't come in with any years at this point.
Does statute permit, even if we were to?
I would have to review that. I don't know that there's been any language, but I can look at that.
They've been so particular about that.
Mr. Benomo, could you give us the update on how the day finished yesterday with the new teacher orientation?
Oh, I think the whole.
Well, the, the first day was yesterday.
I missed that one.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say that, though.
I missed that one.
Yesterday was extremely smooth, from beginning to the end. I think the whole HR team that we put it together did a fantastic job. I think it was well-received in all of the sessions that we did, from doing paperwork, from risk management to certification to the teaching induction program. I think it was well-received by everyone. I think they all burned out by three o'clock, you can go in their faces as if everything was done, but I think everything were extremely smooth.
So it sounds like what he's saying is they feel, felt like they were more like Red Sox players than Yankees players, is what I'm hearing.
And I would like to say that we would like to support you both in whatever you consider a retention opportunity for those, because I was very, very impressed with the number of years of experience that you all recruited. And I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure that those people that are coming in with those years of experience, if they're coming in with 10, 15, and there were a couple that stood up over 20 years, then they might be interested in knowing right now what Florida will offer them if they, they become part of our retirement system, even though it'll be a fitness at some of their ages. But, you know, maybe we, we need to really do some program with them to tell them that it's worth your while to stay here in Florida, because our, our retirement program is one of the best in the nation. So I was, I was very impressed. Both of you, we congratulated, every staff member that helped you. That was all across the United States, and I was absolutely amazed at the years of experience that you stood. Thank you for asking for years of experience.
And the other part is, we work completely on donations, so the businesses that support the school system was unbelievable. We had 102 new teachers there yesterday, and we had 102 gifts for those, actually, we had more than that for those new teachers. So they went home with bagfuls of donated items, and Carol Bulge is phenomenally going out. And all of our staff go out and collect donations, so everyone went home with a bag full of just goodies. They all went home with a gift, $100 Publix gift card, rounds of golf. Our gentleman that has no hair went home with a nice Park Avenue do that he gets to, every year that happens. But, I mean, just to support from the, from the community, from our school system is unbelievable. We get calls every year that say, what can we do to help and support the school, the new teachers?
And I think teacher members were even collected stuff from their classrooms and made it available for them to.
They were, they always go, they, they ask, can we go ahead and take a load out to our car and come back for more? Absolutely.
Yes.
And I think one of the things that I heard for an incentive for some of the students to go into education was they, they were going to refinance their student loans at a lower interest rate. And maybe that's something that we could work with, you know, because our, our credit union is very supportive of our school system. And so maybe if, if we could ask them to maybe look at some of our kids that are coming in with loans, maybe they could offer some refinancing program for them at a lower interest rate.
Yes, do the new teachers come in, do they have a partner or a mentor or something? They're assigned?
Yes, they are. Lyndy Whitkiller works with them on assigning for our new teachers, assigning a mentor to them. Absolutely. And they all go through the teacher induction program, whether it be for one year or two years. So absolutely, they're supported.
All right, Swain, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benomo.
The real thing is about lowering, you know, money charged.
It's like for every one of them.
Yeah, everyone, everyone.
Okay, we move to the next item, item number five, a, Mr. Mullin.
Steve, I don't know if that forever is forever.
Forever? As long as you want. So what we're looking at purchasing is a new system to manage our active directory users and passwords. It provides some features that our current system doesn't have, that allow users to reset their own passwords, and allow users to manage them from a mobile device, and it will also allow us to automatically generate the users from data from our HR system and also from our student system for the students. So it will help our staff save some time, it will have a better security also.
Will this replace stonewall?
Uh, no, it's visual password.
Visual, okay.
As one who always either typed it wrong or missed password, I remember waiting many mornings for the cancel to respond with my new password.
So this will integrate them with Skyworks?
Yes.
And, and in our, in our outlook, where I can set it at home, but if I don't do it at school, I've got two different passwords running in two different places, and this will hopefully improve some of those.
Yes.
And I move approval for the purchase of the Tools Forever software system. It's long overdue. It's not your fault, it's just, you know, what it is.
All right, I do have.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Parrish.
It said about having, having the system for 15,000 students and 2,400 employees. That's not the max, though, it can increase, right?
Yes, it can definitely grow as we.
Yeah, and I just, I want to hear a little bit more about, you know, we're talking about over $100,000. And the only, the, the alternative in your request form here was that the alternative would be to hire additional technology staff to address these needs. So can you kind of go over this with me a little bit? I mean, we haven't used this before, so is this going to free up staff for you now that we're going to spend $104,000 or?
Well, there's, there's one gentleman, that's really, his job is to maintain services in the district, and he spends the majority of his time working with the active directory and managing users, so it'll allow him to spend more time proactively maintaining our servers, making sure they're up to date and more secure. And it will also enable our staff to have better access and save some of their time by being able to do their password resets themselves, and save some of the help desk time with that, but it also enables people to have freedom to do it from mobile devices from home, instead of waiting for our staff to be available to get regular work hours.
But, Mr. Chamberlain, didn't we also, were we not already paying, though, for?
Yes, we're paying for another system.
This is just a replacement to that system?
This is a replacement of the, what was the system name again?
Always forget.
Visual cast.
Visual cast. And, and the only thing, and I would argue and also say, and again, I'm dealing with having a spouse at home, and I know you guys have used this, it takes time away from their work to have to try and log in, and they can't log in because they reset the password at home, and they get to school, and they can't necessarily do it right away, so they call the help desk, and the help desk either can help them, or they have to top them through that process. And in the meantime, you've lost the help desk time, the staff members' time, and then any of the work that needs to be done. It doesn't seem like it's a lot, but it adds up to some serious man-hours over the year.
And the annual cost is not that much higher than the previous product. A lot of this is upfront with the additional purchase. Once we notice the annual fee, it's only about $15,000.
The annual fee, which was, I saw on page, page, so that's the first year, page 10, where you put in for the three years of support, $104,000 is for product implementation, three years of support.
Correct. Yes, that logs into price.
And where, and what page, where did I see the annual fee after this?
Annual fee for the unlimited support that given us the price of the. Annual fee, uh, for the unlimited support that given us the price of the platinum support, which is showing fourteen nine forty.
Fourteen nine forty.
Yes, sir.
It's for one year.
So basically, we're gonna be spending about fifteen thousand a year after the implementation.
Yes, sir. And we're spending close to that now, we're spending about twelve thousand a year.
Right. So over a three-year, there's some of the difference right there between the two, but...
Yeah, but that doesn't count for the, the hundred and four thousand upfront.
But you still have that in, in the product with the other product, would you not still have some of that cost?
No, this, this lot of it is upfront to purchase a new product. It's given us additional features we don't currently have that takes us into future with connecting to other systems and also pushes the, uh, users and accounts out to other software products if we wanted to. I mean, it does also provide better security.
But the current system, if I recall, the problem is, is that it's not concurrent with most of the mobile devices. It's not kept up with the technology of the other integrated parts that we've had, which has been part of the, the problem. So if they're not, if it's not doing it, it's not playing doing it though.
Right, it definitely doesn't work with the mobile devices.
But does, does a hundred and four thousand, it includes three years of support?
That's correct.
So does that mean our fourteen nine forty wouldn't click in until the fourth year?
Correct. Yes, the first.
So they would have, and also pay for three years of support, which is forty-five thousand.
All right. So we're counting on the, the manpower, and I know Mr. Kennedy talks about the comedians and I do agree, there's not just for these people, but for the system, but for our employees.
That's the one thing.
The, the loss productivity there is obviously something we have to kill. I just like, you know, you gave a pretty good description, it was pretty long, but I'm all about financial information too, that I just, you know, I would prefer to have a little more information on the floor, on the, here, as far as what we've had, because really it didn't put anything in here that, you know, answered my questions that I just asked you, so, um, just for future reference. All right, did we, let's see here, we have.
I made a motion.
Do we have a second? We have a vote.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes, five seconds. Good conversation here. Okay, next on the agenda, item six, attorney legal matters, SRO agreement update, Mr. Bradshaw.
I've got two things, we'll start with the SRO agreement update. All right. As y'all are probably aware, we've been in serious negotiations with the sheriff's office and with the county in regards to the SRO agreement. We've basically got it boiled down to two things now that are issues that are causing, you don't have an agreement sitting in front of you right now. The first is in regard to, um, additional monies that may or may not come out of Senate Bill 7026. And we agreed on a, on an amount, the county agreed on an amount, and I think the county had said that they would agree, you know, they would help if they wanted a third, a three-party agreement. So we get down to, if there are additional monies that come out of Senate Bill 7026 for whatever reason, um, you know, we gave the sheriff all of our safe school monies, plus we went into our general fund. The county came up with an amount that's roughly 2.5 million in total. There is sixty-four million dollars, I believe, that is in guardian money for the guardian program and the school marshal program. My understanding is that that money is going to be released to sheriffs that have a guardian program in, for reimbursement of training costs. I think the $500 stipend that goes to, you know, those particular guardians would go to them. I think that there's some belief amongst the sheriff's association that some of that money may be redirected and used for SRO money or for something different. So we, the county and the school district had language in the contract that said that if any additional monies from whatever source comes out of Senate Bill 7026, the monies that we're, we're having budgeted for this, for this year, that those monies would, um, be delivered to the county and it would be distributed back to the school district and to the county in our proportionate share that we are funding for the total amount to reduce our expenditures. The sheriff, uh, does not want that because I think that the guardian money is to be released to the sheriff's office. The sheriff wants language in there that says that if those monies are released, that they will be used to pay costs and capital expenditures and if the payment of cost and capital expenditures reduces the amount of money that, um, that the county and the school district is putting for, then it will reduce, then it can go towards a reduction of our expenditures.
Say that last part again.
The sheriff basically wants the money to pay costs and expenditures, which I believe are, you know, he came and said that he wanted to lease vehicles and that's where we got to roughly 1.1 million. I believe it's now that if that additional money is, he would like to purchase the vehicles, which may drive down costs in future years, but it will not, in my opinion.
But you were saying if it comes in, it goes to the sheriffs as we, I thought, goes to the counties as we understood.
As, as the guardian program is set up.
And their language says, then what would happen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the part I didn't understand.
So any additional monies, whether we got money for whatever reason, the legislature says, you know, we're gonna throw in another powder much to the county or to the sheriff's office, to the school district. We would take that, it would go to the county and the county would say proportionately, the school district's paying 45%, the county's paying 55%, so out of that a hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna get 45,000 back to the school district and we keep 45,000 dollars. This reduces the amount that we will have expended over, over the term of the contract. The hiccup is that guardian money in the statute now goes back to the sheriff because it is used for reimbursement of the training and also as a stipend to go to those particular guardians. Um, because without the sheriff agreeing to a guardian program, you don't have a guardian program. But there's, I believe the sheriff's association feels that that money may get redirected and say, there's not that many guardian programs, so we have this pool of money, we're gonna go ahead and give some money back to, um, sheriffs or school districts or whatever for the SRO program. We, the county and, I'm retorting you how I approached it, the superintendent approached it, was that that money should be used to reduce the amount of money that we initially had expended because all of those capital costs and other costs are, should be included in the total amount that the sheriff proposed as, as, as a budget for this. The sheriff doesn't want that, he wants those monies to pay capital costs and other costs, which, you know, to me means that it may, and the language says, if it does reduce our costs, then we would get a reduction on it. But I don't know where that money's gonna go. I think if he got it, it would probably go towards purchase of vehicles. And so instead of a, a long-term lease, which we indicated that's how he's gonna get down to roughly 1.1 million, it would be a purchase of those vehicles, which may just drive down costs in later years, but it would not drive down our cost this year. Plus, it would in a, in essence have the county and the school board financing the capital improvement for the sheriff's office because he actually owned those vehicles at that point in time, instead of us getting, us getting a reduction. So we are at odds at that. The county absolutely, it has not gone to the board of county commissioners, county commissioners, but like the county administrator, then, I don't believe, cannot rec, they will not recommend a third-party, a three-party agreement with that in there as the sheriff wants it. They want it to be split between the county and the school district, any third parties can we have to reduce how much money that we are expending. So that is number one of where we are.
Before we go to number two, can I ask, because the mandate came down and the money came down to the school boards. And now there's a second load of money for this guardian program that's gonna go to our county commissioners. Is the mandate?
No, ma'am. No, no, ma'am, there was two pots of money. They set aside.
Okay, when you said county, you meant the Citrus County, not the commissioners?
No, ma'am, there's two pots of money. There was a pot of money that, that we got as part of our safe school money that was to be used only for the SRO program. There's another pot of money out there, so the sheriff decided to have the guardian program, it was to be used for the training of those guardians and for the $500 stipend per guardian and to cover those expenses. I don't, I think that that money is not gonna get all, get used up in total. So there's a belief that, I believe amongst the sheriffs, that that money, some of that money may get rerouted by the legislature saying, okay, we have this pot of money that didn't get used, let's get it back in for the SRO programs. And what the county and, and the superintendent want to do is say, okay, if we get another $500,000 this year, we should be able to take that and reduce the 1.1 million that we, that we had to pay by whatever proportion we would get and the county would get, you know, a proportionate share to reduce the amount that they are kicking in to cover that. So the sheriff will not agree to that, he wants the monies to, um, to, to pay for capital expenditures, which should, in my opinion, have already been budgeted in this, in this, um, this year's contract. Because that is a, that is a, like an initial upfront cost, you know, you have to buy belts and guns and vests and all the uniforms and all that, I mean, that is an initial upfront cost to, to start that. So that's, that's where we are with that. The second sticking point right now is that there's a paragraph in there that, um, wanting the sheriff to turn over information or whatever as far as an audit, as far as an audit concerning the contract is concerned. The sheriff has taken the position that under statute, I think there are six categories that the sheriff has to provide an annual accounting for and audit, but doesn't want to provide, to, to obligate himself to have an audit in regards to this particular contract. And so the county is at a position saying that they're not, they don't want to fund any part of this if they can't audit where the money's coming.
I would think we're okay with, with transparency and, and providing that, and permission, as long as it doesn't violate any safety and security issues.
Correct. Correct. So that, that is where we are as far as the audit portion is concerned. So.
How often would be required? I mean, by law, when you take any, any tax dollar money to be, if it's any audit?
It is audited, but it's, it's, the sheriff only has six, I believe it's six categories that has to be audited and I don't think it gets drilled down to like if you were to only audit this contract, about where everything goes.
Okay.
Okay? So it's, it's, it's more of a higher level audit than it is a down in the weeds type audit. And so, and he, he will not agree to that at this time.
What is, what is the statute that you want to agree to? Is it too much trouble or is?
No, ma'am, I think that it's that he is audited pursuant to the statute and that is what he wants to be audited by, as according to the statute and not agree to anything more than what statutorily he is required to be audited. So.
I spoke to the sheriff.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, I think his, his view is that he would be audited by what he's required to be statutorily audited by and he doesn't want to, um, have to submit to more than what he's required to as a constitutional officer. I did speak to him about our discussion here before the board in dealing with extra monies and, you know, it started out that there was a, a big feeling that this guardian money would, there weren't many districts getting on board with it, was all gonna be given back to the SROs and back to the school districts and sheriffs, back to the local, local control. And then started seeing a lot of the school districts starting to develop these hybrid programs, these guardian, guardian programs, trying to do the training for, you know, so, so then the point was, well, we may not get any money. And, and the legislature likes the guardian program, the senate likes the guardian program and there are some benefits for it, especially when they start doing these hybrid programs. And with that, the pendulum went the other way and all of a sudden, it didn't appear that there was gonna be monies released. That's my, now this is my perception, I think you're right. And so when the sheriff was here and he was asked about the additional monies, he told us that this was gonna be for us, you know, because we have to remember that we're putting out quite a bit of money to have the other requirements in the Senate bill, the school safety officer, the, the, you know, we're paying for, for, um, security details, extra security in advance, we're paying for crossing guards, we're paying for a lot of things that were taken out of the general fund, um, that we could, if there were to be any money, that that would come to us. Now, Ms. Hemel and Mr. Bradshaw and I, I, we talked a little bit about it, I felt like to get the contract done, we allow the sheriff or the county, we, we do it according to the proportionate share. Now, we could say we should get it all because that's what I thought we agreed to, that we would get it all. So my feeling is, we're giving in and I think, Ms. Hemel's feeling is, we're, we're giving in because we're only gonna take our proportionate share.
Again.
And, you know, and so, but in my discussion on the phone with the sheriff today, my perception of what he discussed with me was, he thinks we can, that will be an issue, he thinks we can work through that issue. I mean, so now again, this was on a phone conversation, so I'm taking it as our negotiation, if we accept that, if the board accepts that proportionate share. And again, we don't even know if we're gonna get any money, so I don't know why we get hung up on all these things. I wanna get, we wanna get this thing in. But the issue, the audit is not between us, and we don't have, that's the issue between the sheriff and the county commissioner.
Correct.
And so.
It doesn't have anything to do with us.
It doesn't have anything, it, it does not have anything to do with us?
Yes.
And it doesn't?
Well, indirectly it does.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
If they, they don't come to an agreement, then the county would make the choice of not funding the SRO program with the sheriff's office. Because they have said, and I think they've said publicly, that they want the audit on the SRO program. When you go back to the guardian money in June, when we were at the FSBA meeting in Tampa, the commissioner told the superintendents that that guardian money would not be released unless there was a guardian program. Now, things can change, that money goes to DOE and then it gets dispersed out to the sheriff's office once they have a guardian program. But, and like Doug said, so we don't know if there's any money coming down later, if there's gonna be money left there in that guardian program, the state's gonna say, that's too much money up here, let's go ahead and disperse it out. We don't know, nobody knows what kind of that money is. So we're kinda talking about a new issue here, but I think it's, we need to discuss it because if money does come out, we do need our portion of money.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
What I'm concerned about is that we have been negotiating, and I use that term loosely, for a very, very long time. And it always comes down to money. It doesn't come down to safety in our classrooms for our teachers and our kids. It always comes back to the almighty dollar. And I think it needs to stop. I believe wholeheartedly in the SRO program, I still remember a question at the Chronicle Forum when I was running in 2016 about keeping our schools safe and I remember pointing to that audience and looking at all those deputies and their t-shirts and saying, they keep us safe. And I truly believe in the SRO program, but I think we need a change in management. And we've only got a very short period of time to do it now because we are really, we thought we were in a rocky and a hard place at the last meeting, we've got a couple of weeks now to do it. And I don't see, it always comes back to the money, not our kids, I don't care what he says.
And I, and I'm, thank you, Ms. Counsel, by the way, for, I, I, I do agree with Mr., with Chairman Dodd, that I think that we are being very equitable, that when it comes to the money, um, having a proportional share, because I do believe that this board is truly entitled to the funding coverage because we are underfunded from the legislature on this issue.
Yeah.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
If it's money that's going back to the board of county commissioners, not to the sheriff?
If, if it's the guardian money, as it's stated. There's nothing though that says DOE couldn't put that back to the legislature and the legislature could then decide to refund it in some other way to save schools or some other way.
Correct.
And that's the only thing that I, why I say, so I think the way your contract was is whoever gets the money.
As it relates to an SRO program.
As, right, as it relates to that. As, right, as it relates to that, if money came back, it would be then proportionally distributed or, you know, to cover the costs on either side. That seems pretty equitable.
And the reason, and the county doesn't have a problem with that. The county's position was, we're not required to fund anything as far as that's concerned. And there have been other counties that have not funded anything. They have said, you know, we're not, we're not putting any dollars towards the SRO program. But they were like, if we put money into this and more money becomes available, you know, we would like to, you know, for an equitable portion to come back to us. And I think that's where that agrees.
So, and I agree with-
The problem is that the sheriff now wants additional monies to go to start to pay down capital expenses and costs that are, in my opinion, that are already contained in the agreement, as far as the roughly two to five minutes dollars.
And I've, I continue to maintain that I've always thought this was a dollar's amount and not a specific on where those monies, and I think our auditors, we have some issues if we were funding capital dollars that were not associated within the school district. So, but I do think the proportional amount is, is appropriate, and I think it's a, it is a fair compromise or, you know, collaboration. I would just say that when it comes to the audit thing, I, I would agree with the superintendent that where it does still bear out on us, I'm not completely interested in, in every minute funding, particularly how it could relate to safety and security, but I think the commissioners have expressed this and we have, it would be appropriate to find out what is the cost of this program for the taxpayers of Citrus County and how it relates. Now, it may be more expensive this year, it may be less expensive next year, I hope.
Well, the overall cost of the program is in the contract, it's just not-
Only our portion though.
No, his portion.
Is all of it in there?
It's all of it in there, but it doesn't break it down as far as where the, the costs are going, what the costs are going to be.
Yeah, okay.
That's-
To me, the most important was the overall cost.
The overall cost isn't-
It is in the contract.
The overall cost is $2,502,337. And the county is paying $1,392,257, and the school district is paying $1,110,000.
Then, then it would seem like the commissioners, and again, then it would, may not be that it's, it's our issue, because it may be the commissioners are concerned that there's something, that they're, they're obviously then have some different issue that they want to see in the cost.
I believe they're asking, how did you come up with that number?
That's what I was just going to say, so that's, um, I-
And, and I also believe that they want to make sure that monies that are, because this is a, not part of a, I don't know the right term, a cost center, you know, it's not judicial, it's not, you know, personnel, it is broken out specifically into an SRO program, and therefore I believe they want to make sure that this money is spent on the SRO program and to keep track of where-
So the first, the first issue with regards to what to do if there's some magic money that appears is one issue. The audit is the second one, but the audit one really has no jurisdiction over on us, from what it appears. If, whether we agree or disagree with it, that's kind of mooted this. It's a problem, but it has to be done in the contract.
The problem being that without the audit portion, you know, I don't believe that the county is going to, without a third party, three-party agreement, want to fund-
But our portion of it is really the first part of what you discussed.
Correct, correct. And we, and, and part of our, part of what we can do, there's two, in my, my opinion, there's two options to take, you know. You know, it can either get worked out, there's a three-party agreement, which is, that's being the strong one. You can have a two-party agreement between just the school board and the sheriff. You're going to have to remove those items out of the contract, because he's not going to agree to, to the audit or to proportionate share, you know, for any, even more capital dollars that came. I don't believe that he would agree to that, although he did indicate to Mr. Dodd that me and Mr. Bradshaw, his attorney, could probably work some of this out.
But it has to be worked out now.
Correct. And the other is, is to not enter into an agreement, and then that leaves you with the starting the citrus schools, please.
You know, Citrus County, there's always problems with-
If, for some reason we can't, I mean, the timeframe though of where we're at is, this party, this, this agreement has to be signed yesterday, for, and, and I'm using that expressively. So is, are you needing from us that, you know, that, for example, if this is something we can work out, we're agreeing, let's say, if we were to agree that, as Mr. Dodd stated, we have an, we'll, we'll agree to an equitable sharing, if, if for some reason there's, there's money that, that appears. And if for some reason though, that doesn't happen, if, and, and the other question is, when does the county agree to this? Because if the county said, doesn't meet for two more weeks-
County meets August, they meet next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
So by next Tuesday, this has to be worked out and ready for their signature. If it's not, where are we? Because if they say we're not agreeing to it, then this, our problem is, is our kids are coming, our teachers are, are here tomorrow, I'm sorry, on Thursday. We'll have kids in school on the 13th.
I have ideas on how to provide security.
So, but then, do, does that need to be direction that we do now, or will we call a special meeting?
I, I, I foresee a special meeting coming, no matter what, because, you know, to, to move forward with a, with our own police department, we need to vote on that. So there would need to be some type of action taken, as I'm on the agenda today. So I would suggest a special meeting Monday morning, and probably go ahead and do that no matter what.
What's the status of the 1.3 million 92 that the commissioners provide to the sheriff for the SRO program? Is it already in his current budget?
No, it isn't. That is, yeah, the language is a little funny, because our budget here, July 1 to June 30, October 1 to September 30. So I can read you that language. It's the 1.3, they agree that 348,000 has been or will be paid as part of the county's law enforcement budget for the sheriff for the 17, 18 fiscal year, and the balance of 1,044,000, blah, 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 will be covered in the next nine months, so that this, their funding ends June 30, along with our funding.
Okay.
So that next year, if we go to re-enter into an agreement, he would do a budget amendment for those three months, they would fund for the other nine months, you know, if, if we enter into another contract.
I think the sheriff is committed to making, making the program work. It's going to come down, in my view, to a decision between the sheriff, either allowing for an audit, in this case because of this specialized program, and because of what's taken place and, and the transparency that the county's asked for. He's either going to have to agree to that, or the county's going to have to agree to take out their requirement of an audit. That's what it's going to come down to. But I think that for us to try to move and start a school or police department is not a prudent decision. I hope our hand won't be forced that we have to make that decision.
I hope so too.
I think our hands be-
I thought we would have a contract today. I thought we were going to approve a contract. And now, we don't have that. And we're, we are going to have to have a special meeting, because none of us want to approve a contract that we don't see, we've got to be able to see the contract.
Here's, this board has to take an affirmative action to start its own police department. There needs to, I've talked to the people at FDLE, I know Mr. Serlich has, you know, you have to, I have a draft motion that I prepared for a couple of weeks ago, or a resolution, because you have to, you have to affirmatively move to create one, to name it, to direct the superintendent to take all of their actions proper and necessary to do it. You have to go to FDLE, you have to apply to the FBI to get an original authentication number, which is a number that gets assigned to you that allows you to go ahead and start hiring people. Then you have to go through the hiring process. It's not, you know, and that part's the easy part.
Just for argument's sake, if the board were to even consider that, and I'm not, I don't want to get Chairman Dodd thinking that that's what we're doing, I'm just trying to make sure I have some understandings. If we were even to consider that, there's other school districts that I think are going through this.
Correct.
And some of the stuff, if I'm reading in the media is correct, there's been issue to say that the local law enforcement has said, we're not going to provide coverage in those schools, and there seems to be some argument to say that you have an obligation to, under some of the laws, under their, you know, the constitution of the state, to provide safety and security for that, so you can't just simply walk away from an obligation until there is another law enforcement agency in place. You kind of referenced that you, that you, you know, you've, you've looked through some of those things. Would we be able to not just meet mandate, but meet safety issues by providing that we have some type of either law enforcement or armed protection in our schools until we have a full law enforcement in place? Or at least have, are we explored those where you would be able to, someone would be able to present that to us if that became a decision we have to make?
I think that by the time that if you had a special meeting, and that you could probably have some of those questions answered, if you went to a shade of security session.
Okay. That was really, that's all I was looking for.
And, and just, and just saying that we are going to start it, or having, having that, that motion does not mean that we need to continue to move forward with it if we come into an agreement.
We still have to come into an agreement with the, the county commissioners though. That they, they still be willing to share and, and participate in an SRO program, in a contract with us?
If we started our own, that I do not know.
That would be an important question.
But they did, in the contract right now, they've funded about 1.3, almost 1.4 million dollars.
I, I guess what I need, if my, what I need today from you is this. If the sheriff stays with the, with the way that he wants it, that says that any additional monies go to pay costs and capital expenditure before it starts reducing, I, I can read you the language, it's probably easier if I just read the language.
I, I don't think, I think the sheriff's good with the proportionate share.
I have not heard that from his attorney in any conversation that I've had.
And we have the county commission asking this board to act in good faith, and that's not a big request to ask, but I think we sort of owe, they have supported us, and they're asking us to support them.
So what are you alluding to? I'm not sure if I understood that, Ms. Powers.
I just, I think that what the county commission is asking, said, of the sheriff about the budget audit. That's a very reasonable link to ask, to ask us to support them.
I missed, I missed, I missed that. All right. Yeah, I, I don't have any problem supporting the county, I'm sorry.
And the audit portion?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my second question, okay. But the first part, the original contract language was the parties agree that any additional allocation from the state from Senate Bill 7026 for school resource officers, so it has to go to the school, a school resource program, made to the sheriff's school district or the county, shall be applied to offset the county and the school district's proportionate share of the total program cost on this agreement, any additional allocation will be sent to the county for distribution. The sheriff came back with, the parties agree that any additional allocation from the state from Senate Bill 7026 for school resource officers made to the sheriff, the school district, or the county, shall be applied to fund costs or capital expenditures directly associated with the SRO program. If the application of such funds reduce the sheriff's cost of providing the SRO program during the term, the obligation of the school district and the county shall be reduced accordingly. So it's only if those monies come, they're spent on costs, their capital expenditures, and it reduces the program cost, that we would see a reduction in the amount of money that we're paying.
If though, in order to hopefully resolve this, a motion was made though, clear to what the expectation of, of what Mr. Dodd has kind of explained to us, of an equitable share. Because my concern with the legalese, and, and I have great respect for you, Mr. Bradshaw, so you know this, has nothing to do with you on this, but is, okay, what if somebody deems some funding to be for one thing, and neither of the contracts address it, now we're, you know, disagreeing about the minute point of how it could be described as the monies coming through? I, I think the, the purpose should be, is if monies are coming back, it's shared proportionally. And, and whether that is that they've taken guardian money and bling made it something else, or they've taken some other money that they found and they've done something else, I really don't care how they call it, if money's coming back to anybody, it should be divided back equitably, or each of other parties reduce their obligation to it. End of story, it doesn't need to be, you know, more. And to me, that should be, and if that's, if the sheriff is comfortable with that, then I can move forward, but if he's not, then we have to be prepared, because we have students coming on the 13th of this month, next month, but in just a day.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And that's what I think concerns this board, is that we've got to make sure that, and I, I have, I, I think when the sheriff has come here, he has tried very hard to explain to us that he absolutely will be there on the 13th with that. So I, you know, I have no problem saying, supporting a motion that indicates that we do that equitable share. I think we absolutely have every reason to support the county in their, their request on their audit, and we should do that, but if we need to set a Friday meeting, and that has to be set by statute so that we meet that, we always don't have to meet, but we can make sure that that's recorded as of today.
So I don't know if I actually need a motion, I, I just need, I get it, but that-
Whatever that is.
Because my, because there's nothing really here to, to approve or whatever, but my understanding is that this board is not going to support anything other than an equitable distribution of any funds that come between, between, and the equitable distribution is going to be between the county and the school district proportionally what we've expended. So if monies don't go to pay for costs or capital improvements or capital expenditures, if any money comes in and gets divided up between the county and the school district proportionally, correct? And then also that you support the county in regard to some type of an audit or financial accountability, you know, maybe the term audit is-
I was just going to say that, that's not going to come up by the way it's described.
Right, but some type of financial responsibility, I don't want to say financial responsibility, but it, but, you know, something-
Transparency of what they've spent.
Some type of financial accountability as far as how the monies are being spent.
Mr. Bradshaw, could I, what about hardening money? If it comes down specifically designated as hardening money?
That's a separate part, and that's why it says, you know, for SRO programs, that money is going to be voted on separately to go to hardening of schools.
When you're saying any monies, I just thought we might need codifying.
It says any monies from H, from Senate Bill 726 regarding an SRO program.
And I, I think, but I think we're all, as long as we're clear, then I don't have a problem with that.
But I appreciate that.
Yeah, I know.
Well, we find clear, he doesn't.
I will make sure that that is absolutely clear, that it doesn't include anything except for going to, I guess, I guess the better terminology may be to a safe school officer, which is your SRO, your, your guardian, or a, your own police department, looking for safety.
And the sheriff calls them people, I'm sorry.
No, that's not-
Calls them deputy, safe school deputy, and that doesn't make any difference in this, as we don't have to account for that.
I'm sorry ma'am.
The contract says school resource officer.
Correct.
But he calls them, uh, safe school deputies.
He calls them the school resource deputy.
Yeah.
He'd call them whatever he wants to, the contract doesn't-
Still the same person, okay.
And I'm just worried, because we're, we're on a time frame 14 days, and when we found ourselves back in May, we were at a summer school problem, and we were told no deputies. So I remember the promise that no matter what, we would have coverage on August 13, but we didn't get it in June, and we didn't get it in July. So I'm still, I'm still saying, we've heard it before, and I said way back when we started this in March, and we're still sitting here saying the same things over and over again, and the kids are coming in 14 days. And I think we need to be prepared.
We're worried about our children.
My suggestion would be call a special, go ahead and advertise for a special meeting, maybe Monday, because you have to have 48 hours notice. So tomorrow's Wednesday, it wouldn't even make it to the paper, so it would first be advertised on Thursday. I would go Monday, Monday morning, and my suggestion would be to have on the agenda the approval of the, the SRO agreement, you know, as like item one, and item two is the, you know, if so, if y'all choose to do so, you know, to talk, to, to approve the, um, the establishment of the Citrus County Police Department, to go, to go that route, because other, that's the only two routes you have right now, is either contract with the sheriff or to start your own police department. Because there's no good-
And before we did that, we'd want some, some input from the commissioners on, on a budget, if they would participate and come into contact with us.
I can inquire, I don't- I can inquire, I don't know how, if they, they, they're gonna be the same as you. They can't, they may individually say, they may do something or may not, but sitting, you know, they can't really do anything until we're sitting in their, in their, in their meeting.
And, all right, I gotta say this because I wanna make sure that we don't get tied up into an issue between the sheriff and the county commissioner. I know Mr. Kennedy said, you know, and Ms. Powers, who said, we don't have a problem with the audit. You know, why don't we say, we will be transparent in our financial accounting of the school resource officers, the money that we have coming in versus what we're paying out. And we, that is what we will commit to. And let the sheriff and the county commission decide how they're gonna handle that side of it. I don't, I think leadership will rise to the top here. And it, it won't be an issue. That's what I really hope for.
Me too.
But for us, transparency is very important and we'll be very transparent. But the sheriff and, the sheriff's attorney and the county attorney have to agree on, they're a part of it.
They are at complete loggerheads over it.
Well, then they need to, like I said, have a little sidebar meeting and, and get this thing taken care of and get the job done. And that's what I believe is gonna happen. So, you know, I don't think you need a motion.
I don't.
Okay. But would that be okay if we were to take that approach and say-
Yes, yes.
Perfectly.
Hopefully transparent.
Right, here, here.
Okay. And then we schedule the, uh, special meeting for Monday. What time would that be?
What time would you, would you want? I mean, you have plenty of time to advertise.
Well, we need to have some time in case there's some last minute feelings Monday morning.
Unless we end up doing that, or one o'clock in the afternoon is fine, that's fine.
One o'clock, is that okay, Ms. Campbell?
Fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
One o'clock to advertise. Now, we can always cancel, well, no, I guess, I guess we-
Well, the hope is we're gonna-
And we have the contract.
Hope is, is we have the contract.
It's a lot, that would be.
Yeah.
On Monday, we hopefully have seven days for safety and protection.
I, I believe we have.
My, you know, I truly believe that if, if we have an agreement on Monday that the superintendent supports, that the county administrator supports, and the sheriff supports, the county is not going to be until the 7th. They have a placeholder in their agenda for this, for this agreement. And I, you know, I talked with Ms. Lynn and said, because of timeframe, so.
Well, that would allow them, you know, that hopefully if everything's worked out Monday, we'd sign it, it would go to them. And they, and which I think what they want is they wanted the parties to have it signed.
They, they even agree-
We will admit their deadline.
They'd agree that they would sign first, it's easy, first, last, however it needs to be. So, um, so it may not be signed by everybody on Monday, but I think if, if we're in here signing that, the sheriff's signed it, we've signed it, it's not gonna be an issue when it goes to the county.
Okay. Any other questions or anything else that needs to come to Mr. Bradshaw?
Did we need to make the decision whether they're gonna be blue or light blue shirts for the uniforms?
I think he's lost it for a minute.
I do have one more issue.
Okay.
Please be separate. Ma'am, I know, I'm sorry. This, this will only take a moment. If you remember last year, we had an employment case with a lady, Laura Dunham, from Pleasant Grove Elementary School, and we terminated her employment.
Yes.
I know the board knows that Ms. Dunham took that matter up on appeal. And this morning, I received an order from the Fifth District Court of Appeal that the board's decision was per curiam affirmed. So, they upheld the school board's decision without comment as far as the termination is concerned. So, that matters, so that matter is complete because of the time down.
Very good.
Okay, very good. Is there any public comment? Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Bradshaw, is that?
No, that's it.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment? Anyone wanna approach the board? Okay, seeing that, we're gonna go to any other business that needs to come before the school board. Mr. Muller.
I just have a quick question. We've got this thing on Friday. What time does it start? When do you do this there? I'm gonna try to make this one.
Oh, yes, Steve.
Breakfast starts at seven, seven fifteen. Vendor share, vendor will be there, and I think speaking.
I'm sorry.
And the vent, and the speaker, I think, is around nine thirty. We'll, we'll email off for this tomorrow. Thank you.
Now, we're doing it like in the past where we have two different sections.
One section.
Oh, there's one section.
We're trying to get teachers back so they can do some of their mandatory training in the afternoon.
Okay.
Several mandatory trainings that's been added to the breakfast share.
We're trying to do two ways of practice with the- Okay.
They'll run take the breakfasts.
But the program, the program starts around nine, right?
Yeah.
Okay, how about you'll get into this.
Mr. Bradshaw, Mr. Would you give us the figures that you went through here on, with the board, figures for the-
You have the draft SRO contract that you gave, so then I would-
It is not complete. I mean, if you-
When do, when do you finish?
I mean, it's still, I consider it's still some work product in there, just we're, we're doing all that. But if you would like to know what the, the agreed upon amounts were, I'd be one happy to give you that.
That'd be great.
Would you like me to tell them to you now, or?
No, just-
Email it to him.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
That's a lot of questions.
Okay. Ms. Powers, anything else?
No.
Okay. Ms. Counsel.
I don't know. I sure did enjoy seeing a hundred and two teachers stand up yesterday. Our human resources, Mrs. Dundee, and Brian, and probably Steve made a bit of compliment on that.
You know, we should just stand up for these teachers. You up with motive that you, you up with motive that you, ask us.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's, that's basically what I told you, is communication.
Take a boat ride with a, a bunch of eligible men and women bachelors in Citrus County would-
You had some sessions with them, you were attached here, and you know, they were profitable.
Ms. Powers, I made with the, anywhere, we can certainly ask them. Okay, that would be great.
And since, since they're, they're talking with some experience, we need to tell their retirement program. Because they, if they can come best of the year, they-
We're gonna try to take a break before 5:30. So, Mr. Kennedy, do you have, or Ms. Counsel, are you?
Yeah, I'm done. It was a good day.
Okay, great.
Two things. One, I just wanna inform the board that I was selected by FHSAA to be on their appeals board for Area 2. So, I'll be attending those meetings, which is a, a wonderful obligation. And I actually am very excited about it.
One of them.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, Ms. Emily, I know you've served on that and-
You'll be worse than I will.
And then the only other thing is, I had a parent communicate with me this past week as they were buying clothes. And I'm, I'm putting this on there, I don't know, she was here earlier, Kit was here. But I do think we, it, it is worthy for us to bring back a conversation regarding shorts length. I thought this was not a big problem till I asked my own wife and child. And the answer is, they struggle to find shorts, particularly girl's shorts, that meet our requirement because of the way the seating does. They can't really buy shorts that, that meet that.
And buy the trees.
Well, the trouble is, is that that may be the case, but I can tell you, I do think that there is more parents that in conversations, they, they are having an issue with this and they are asking the board for consideration.
Do you want uniforms?
Um, I, no, I think that they're gonna, they may be coming knocking on the door here. So, I think that is something that, that we need to be aware of, that it, it's, it isn't, I think, an issue that isn't worth considering. So-
Well, I, I will say as a teacher though, that dress code is, is a distraction in the classroom. And some of the girls are tired, and it's specifically to the girls. You know, there's, boys have a couple of problems, but the girls have more. It's a problem and it's a distraction in the classroom if we don't cover up the, what I call the three Vs.
But I think we, that our attorney would say that, that a distraction in the classroom is not a distracting the teacher, it's a distraction of, of how it distracts the children.
Right.
And as a result of that, I do think that we also have to be aware that what we may deem as an issue may not be what our parents are asking of us. And I think we owe it to get parent input. I've talked to the parents that, that have mentioned this, but I've, interestingly, not just my one English teacher, but asking some other teachers, they are saying that it's become so challenging that sometimes they just decide not to see it. And if, if we're just overlooking a situation, then we need to probably look at addressing it.
Okay.
So, I just think it's something we need to maybe be aware of in, in a conversation at, at some date that we're gonna need to address. So, that's it.
Okay, very good. I'm, I'm good to go, so.
I'm good.
Okay, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting and we will reopen our public area, or we will open the public area at 5:30. So, we are, we have-